Good evening and welcome to the special meeting of the City Council for the City of Pleasant Hill on July ten, twenty twenty-three. For those who are able, please rise for the pledge of allegiance. Well, good evening. May we have the roll call?
Noah? Rin?
Here.
Chess?
Here.
Vincent?
Here.
Clarity?
Here. Since this is a special meeting, I do want to remind those who are not in the chambers, and for those of you who are here, thank you for being here in person. But you can also join us virtually by Zoom, www.zoom.us. The information is now being broadcast on the screen. The meeting ID is eight one four one seven six two six seven two one, the passcode two one five nine nine eight. You can also call us on the telephone by dialing area code six six nine nine zero zero six eight three three. We're going to dispense with general announcements and council member announcements unless somebody's clamoring for the opportunity to announce something and move to public comment. So this is the time, the public is welcome at this time to address the city council on items not listed on the agenda but within the council's jurisdiction. We have one item on our agenda later on, and you will have an opportunity to comment on that when we call that item. Comments are limited to three minutes per speaker. I just gave the instructions for virtual connectivity. Is there anyone in the chambers that wishes to offer public comment? Seeing none, we'll turn to our virtual connection. Anybody on Zoom?
There are no hands raised.
All right, then we'll close public comments and we'll move to the action calendar, item five point one, the introduction of an ordinance of the city council to go establishing by district elections, defining district boundaries, and scheduling elections within the districts. Our city attorney Janet Colson and her colleague Jim Priest may be here to offer report.
Thank you. Yes, is Jim on the?
He was.
Okay. He is.
Welcome.
Thank you. Okay, so we are at the point now, you have an ordinance in front of you. That will be the introduction, the first reading for the going to district elections pursuant to map five, and that is attached to the back of the ordinance. I do want to point out, I think we didn't change the numbering on this. I believe at one of the last meetings on map five, you wanted the numbering on three and four switched, I believe. We can definitely do that if that's something that you want to do. Because they're just the way we have named the districts. We've numbered the districts. So we are at that point for introduction. If this ordinance is introduced first reading tonight, it will be second reading adoption next Monday night at a regularly scheduled meeting. This is a special meeting, and you will notice that there is something new that I have added to the top of the map, and it's also in the ordinance. It's the sequencing of elections. And I don't know that we've really talked too much about this, but we are proposing that the you keep the three and two split that you have for elections. So we have two seats that were up in twenty twenty-two. They would be up again in twenty twenty-six. It just works out that way. But we have three seats up in twenty twenty-four, and as it is proposed, one, three, and four would be the districts that would be up for election in twenty twenty-four. Two and five would be the ones up in twenty twenty-six. And you will note that the two council members who have were elected in the fall of twenty twenty-two, council member Noak and council member Chess live in two and five. It just worked out that way, but it doesn't have, the sequencing doesn't have to be like that. It can be anything the council wants, and so that's up to you. We have made that assumption and put that in here, but if that's not your pleasure, please let us know, and that can change. I think there needs to be some explanation about what that would do. It's a little complicated. So please bear with me. Let's say, for example, I think the best way to understand this may be to use examples. District five right now has four of the sitting council members living in district five. Council member Chess, you happen to live there, but you have an at-large seat that does not end until twenty twenty-six. If you were to select district five for election in twenty twenty-four, it would be the district five seat. It would not be the at-large seat that you currently hold. And so anybody could run who lives in district five could run for that seat in twenty twenty-four, including you. You could, you could run for that. If you did not win, you would still fill out your position on council until twenty twenty-six. That cannot be taken away from you. That is yours. But if you did win that seat, if five were up and you won, you would presumably, because you ran for it, take the four-year twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-eight district seat. You would resign your at-large seat with two years left on it, and the council would have to appoint someone at large to fill that at-large seat. So that's one scenario. Does that make sense? And I'm, I'm sorry, I just think it's important that you understand this. Do, are there any questions about that?
If I understand you correctly, there are no council members that have been elected by district.
Correct.
The council members that will be here in November of twenty twenty-four will be at-large council members.
Correct.
So, well, council member Chess lives in district five. He's not been elected by district five. So if I understand you, you could have a district five or even a district two, for that matter, election next cycle, and the people that live in that district but still have an unfilled term will remain to fill their term, or as you suggest, they could run for the district in that election as well, resign their general seat. The then constituted council would appoint at-large, we use at-large, it could just be anybody from anywhere in the boundaries of the city.
Right.
Right. I understood that.
Okay. And Jim will correct me if I'm, if I mistake on any of this.
Nope, you are correct on this. And that's just, you know, where, where, that's part of the issue of the sequencing when you have a number of council members on different tracks in the same district. This necessarily happens to some elected officials with the sequencing here. But yeah, as you said, the at-large seat would continue to serve till twenty twenty-six, but if elected to a district five seat in twenty twenty-four, that seat could be resigned. That would create a vacancy which could be filled by the council through appointment. That appointment would be good until twenty twenty-six. Alternatively, the council could elect to put that on a special election sometime in twenty twenty-five and go with that. But again, that would be a council discretionary option there.
And the important point to note, I think about that, is that that remaining two-year term is an at-large position, and so anybody, anywhere in the city could be selected to fill that by appointment. It doesn't have to be somebody from district five because it's still an at-large seat.
And to cover those bases, we have made that explicit in the ordinance. So that is clear in there that any vacancy of an at-large seat is filled at large. And then once the seat transitions over to a district seat, either in twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-six, depending on the particular seat, then further vacancy appointments or special elections would be filled by the voters of that specific district. But that's only after they've naturally cycled to a regular election.
Okay, so can I just follow up on that? Because there was some questions on Facebook about this, and I think the answers may have been incorrect. So somebody had asked about item four on here, where a city council member resigned or, you know, left the state or something else, and what happened to their seat. So Zach and I being, let's just say, going through to twenty twenty-six, if we were to resign in December twenty twenty-four, our seat would be filled as an at-large seat, not as a district seat.
Correct.
Okay, I just, that, that information that was online was incorrect, and I just want to make sure that's clarified for the public.
Sure.
If I read in the staff report, you're not recommending that we've sort of, in our discussions up to this point, treated the districts in which councilman Noak and Chess live as sort of their districts by default.
That is the easiest way to look at it, but it's definitely not something cast in stone. That's a council decision. So I wanted to make sure council understood you have that ability to do that.
Yeah, I don't, well, we never discussed them before, so I don't know what anybody's awareness was, but I didn't have that awareness. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I, could I just add one additional comment? As Ms. Colson indicated, this will be the council's direction, which way the sequencing is established. One thing I would want to point out is particularly district one. District one, as the council recall, has the largest coalition minority citizen voting age population, CVAP, one of those acronyms we've been learning over the last few months on this. Because district one has the highest coalition minority voter population, it's consistent with the CVRA that that elect, that district elect as soon as possible. So that is why our recommendation is that district one go in twenty twenty-four. The other districts, there's no presumption or favoring one way or the other in the law. That would be the council's policy. Thank you.
Anything further from you, Ms. Colson?
No, I'm happy to take any questions.
Anybody have any questions that they haven't already asked? Anybody?
I, I do. Yeah, thanks, Mayor. Okay, so I, I came in here, I wanted to find out about number, number four. Number four on the, under Article four, two point five five point one six oh. I, this seemed, I just wanted to get clarification on this, and, and, and councilman Noak seemed to kind of touch on it, but I just want to make sure that, because it says in here that it's at, where was I? Yeah, it's something about not withstanding any provision in this section, the council member in office at the time takes effect shall continue in office until the expiration, okay, usually. In the event a vacancy occurs before the expiration of the term of the council in office at the time this section takes effect, a person who is appointed or elected by special election to fill the vacancy may reside anywhere within the corporate boundaries of the city. To me, that doesn't say anything about districts or at-large, right? So is that, I mean, is that gonna, is this gonna apply to, if we, if everything's done with district elections, it's approved, we're done? The way this is, to me, I interpret this was like, under district elections, this could be, you could still get, if someone, if someone has to resign, it would, it would be appointed as an at-large. That's how I interpret. Is that not correct?
We have a transition period.
Okay.
And so, yes, you're going to district elections. Your first district election will be November of twenty twenty-four. But we have two seats that were yours, the one you're sitting in now and the one that council member Noak is in. Those were at-large seats. They're not by district.
I get that. Let me stop you, because I think you're, you're gonna, you're gonna probably tell us what you just said, and that's great. But what I'm saying, let's, let's go out eight years. Let's just say everything, we, district elections, we're, we're well into this process. Is number four, where it says here, a person who is appointed or elected by special election to fill such vacancy may reside anywhere within the corporate boundaries of the city. Does that mean that?
Maybe I could put a commentary on that. Uh, subsection A four is the great transitional exception rule, basically. Not withstanding any other provision. This thing commits the city to by-district elections. Three districts will naturally transition over in November of twenty twenty-four. The other two will naturally transition in November twenty twenty-six. But as we discussed earlier, those twenty twenty-six seats can remain at-large, and you and council member Noak are entitled to serve the entirety of those terms. You were elected to those. But if there happens to be a vacancy in that office, council members in office at the time, we're filling a vacancy for council member seats in office at the time. So this is just a transitional rule. Eight years from now, this is going to be history. This is just, again, to honor the legal requirement that those twenty twenty-six at-large seats get to continue until the nat, the natural end of their elected term. Then they'll transition over to by-district. So this is not going to have any effect after twenty twenty-six.
Okay. Thank you, Jim.
And by the way, that's just very technical language in the ordinance for you can appoint or elect somebody at large, is that they may reside anywhere within the corporate boundaries of the city. Well, that's at-large, in a technical definition sense.
Any other questions?
Go on. So if there was a proposed change to this order, where does that, where does that put us with, just theoretically, where does that put us with our, our seven-day reading, our, our Shankman? Where does that, where does that?
We can, we could make changes to the sequencing tonight. You could still introduce tonight as modified, as amended. Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, yeah, it's not gonna, it'd be fine.
Thank you. That's fine, I have a rookie question, but thank you for indulging me. No more questions from you, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Rin, you have some question?
I know this. Just following up on Councilmember Chess's comment about the A four, not to over-lawyer this, but it's potentially ambiguous where it says, in the event a vacancy occurs before the expiration of the term of a council member in office at the time this section takes effect. Shouldn't we identify that it's the term that they hold at the time the ordinance takes effect? As opposed to somebody coming down the road and said, I've been re-elected, or I'm here, but my term has expired, and the council at that time says we get an at-large appointment. Does that make sense?
Because I'm, because I'm a council member.
Right.
So if I ran again in twenty twenty-six and resigned in twenty twenty-seven, you're saying because I was a council member still at the time this took effect, that makes it a little ambiguous.
So I would suggest that we just say that before the expiration of the term the council member holds at the time the ordinance is adopted.
Well, let's.
Something to that effect. I mean, I, I, I read it the way you describe it, but after listening to councilmember Chess, I, I could see a potential ambiguity and don't want to.
Shall continue in office until the expiration of the term to which he or she was elected. In the event a vacancy occurs before the expiration of the term of a council member in office at the time this section takes.
That's like two things. You have a term, doesn't say which term, but it does identify a council member in, in, in office now, and I think those are disjointed or potentially disjointed.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Mayor.
Couldn't it simply say that after twenty twenty-six, there will be no more at-large?
Let's hear from our expert consultants. It's a good, good solution.
Too many lawyers in here.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
Might I suggest some alternate wording of that sentence? In the event a vacancy occurs before the expiration of the term of a council member, the, the term a council member currently holds at the time this section takes effect. That would be clear language of limitation. It's the term they currently hold. It's the expiration of that. It's not some future term they may be elected to two, four years from now.
I'm fine with it.
Read that to me again. Let me write, make sure I get that.
In the event a vacancy occurs. I'm, all right, I'm sorry.
Sorry, I was just saying I liked Alan's version where it just says after twenty twenty-six is done. It's a lot clearer that we just say after the twenty twenty-six election, this no longer, the section four no longer applies. I think that makes it even easier.
We could do it either way.
That's a non-lawyer speaking. It's a non-lawyer speaking.
Do we have a preference? Do we want to do it? We want to say prior to twenty twenty-six, in the event a vacancy occurs, is that what you're talking about? Is that what you said?
Something like that, yes.
Prior to the twenty twenty-six November election.
So it's clear that after twenty twenty-six, there are no more at-large.
Seats.
Seats.
Prior to November twenty twenty-six, in the event a vacancy occurs before the expiration of the term of a council member in office at the time this section takes effect, person who is appointed or elected by special election to fill such vacancy may reside anywhere within the corporate boundaries of the city. Does that seem okay?
It does. We might want to take a break and print that out and pass it out for everyone to look at, other than just take the verbal reading of it.
We can take the verbal reading technically, or if you wish to take a break and print it out, we can do so, but.
I'd like to see it in print.
Okay. I will, I can do that.
Person, what are the rest of the council thing?
That's fine.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll be, how long do we have here? Ten minutes?
How long do you need?
I am gonna do it as fast as I can.
Is there anything else we want to talk about, about the ordinance? Any questions, its content, before we take a break?
Why don't we go through the whole thing and then Janet can make a change and then we'll take a look at it that time.
That's good. We'll do public comment, too, because any other changes that come as a result of public comment. Those are all the questions of council. Loop on public comment on this item now. Do we have anybody here in chambers who would like to make public comments on this item? Seeing that, I'll turn to our city clerk. Any virtual attendees?
There are no hands raised.
Oh, all right. Well, thank you. We'll close public comments at this time, and we'll take fifteen-minute break to allow the city attorney to provide a revised copy of the ordinance. We'll reconvene at seven thirty-seven. Thank you.
7:37. Thank you.
Welcome back. Uh, reconvening the city, special city council meeting. Uh, the city attorney has handed out on the break, um, a red line version of, uh, section A4 of the proposed, uh, ordinance for the by-district elections. Uh, the new sentence reads, until the November 3, 2026 general municipal election, in the event of vacancy in an at-large office occurs before the expiration of the council member's term, a person who was appointed or elected by special election to fill such vacancy may reside anywhere within the corporate boundaries of the city. I'm fine with that. All right, with that amendment, uh, do I need to reopen public? I think public comment already occurred. You indicated that was the change we were going to make. There is anyone on Zoom that has their hand raised? Make sure.
There are no hands raised.
Okay. Uh, any other comments or promotion or what?
Just in general, um, I appreciate the city attorney taking uh, the time to kind of explain a little bit further, um, you know, about the differential between the two at-large, uh, continuing members, um, with the proposed, uh, sequencing, I agree that we should still include the District 1 as one of the options there, uh, because that's kind of the reason why we're here. Um, but I would be open to other suggestions for the sequencing. And I would ask also that we look at District 5 as one of the options for the sequencing for the 2024 elections.
And then removing?
Uh, I would, I would, I could go 1, 4, 5, but I'm open to 1, 3, 5. Um, any variation of those, but I definitely go with 1 and then have 5 as an option and then depending on the preference of the council, uh, either 3 or 4 at that point, um, but I would, my proposal would be 1, 4, 5. For discussion, because now we are, we're actually having this discussion. We've kind of gone through the process and.
Right. And I'd like to hear some of the rationale for that, though. Um, and I could think of some, but just curious what yours are.
Yeah, I, I, I think that we're in a situation that, you know, like where a lot of us reside within District 5, um, and a lot of us are up um, in 2024 and in theory, if we, um, went with only the new districted, then you know, obviously anyone can run District 5 at any time who's eligible, but then the three of us would have to sit out for at least two years, um, without a, a position. Um, and having it on the 2024 ballot would, um, have that option where we would have, um, an ability to continue to serve as a council member in that capacity. Um, also at that time, since, uh, council member, chess and council member Noak, uh, their terms are for four years, so they would still be able to continue on with their terms. Uh, and so they would be able to satisfy their full four-year terms uh, with that being affected. It does give, uh, council member chess an option to run for uh, election for District in 2024, which would, you know, if he does prevail in that case, uh, he would get a four full years as a district member, so additional two years from the two he's already served, um, at that point. Um, I, I don't want to say he doesn't have anything to lose, but if he didn't prevail in that situation, he would still be able to complete, uh, his at-large term for the full four years in that scenario, but if he does prevail, then it would be his option, um, to be the district representative and/or resign the at-large position. That's, it's still, somebody's got to kind of sit out in those scenarios, whether it's the three of us who are turning out in 2024. Um, or in 2026, uh, once council member chess is at large position, then he would have the option, if he wanted to, to run in 2028 for that district seat as well. So that's some of the, um, ideas about that and open to discussion since we haven't really talked about the sequencing.
Well, if, if I just follow your example, if, if and not pick on, on Councilmember Chat, but.
Yeah, and there's nothing, no, no, none intended. It's just running through hypothetical scenarios, but of what we've been told.
Councilmember chess just chose to remain in his, in his general elected office that runs through 2026. Or, or strike that. Uh, if he did run for the district seat and prevailed, he would have to resign his general election seat because he can't hold two seats at the same time. And so then whoever's on the council, uh, at the end of 2024 would have the same decision we had at the end of last year, how to fill a vacant seat by appointment or special election. Uh, and that just seems a little onerous, uh, to have to do that again so quickly. Uh, I mean, I can see somebody making an argument that by running an election in a district where a council member's term does not expire, maybe gives the opportunity for an incumbent to run again and you have more seasoned people on the council. Uh, but I, I just don't think that's a good look. That it seems like it's, it's done to preserve incumbency. So, I don't know. I, I, I do appreciate all the new information and, and I think it's an interesting question and I'll defer to the rest of the council on how they want to handle this, uh, but it just seems to me that in my mind, I've always treated the proposed District 5 and District 2 as being inherited by our current elected officials that live in that district whose term doesn't expire. And, uh, that we've been recalled by districting, so.
I agree. I agree at that point. If I may, uh, counter, you, you made the statement about, uh, preservation of incumbency. Um, eh, eh, but I also think it, uh, preserves continuity potentially of the council. Uh, it'd be a situation, I mean, obviously you don't know which way it'd go, uh, in District 5 elections, but potentially if you go with three brand-new districts, that would bring in three brand-new council members to the, to the dais, um, which, you know, change is good, it's going to happen inevitably because you know, if we do go with the 5, 1, 4, 1, there still will be two new council members coming to the dais, so it's it's more of a, a continuity of having, potentially, if, if a incumbent does win in 5, you know, then that would be that scenario.
So the same could be true of District 2 if we decided we wanted to, although, I don't know. I'd like to hear from the other councilmen.
Sure.
Well, District 2 is a little different, only in that continuity doesn't come into play, right? I mean, if, if you put District 2 up in 2024, I, there's, there's no other incumbents in District 2, so I'd either prevail and go four more years, I'd lose and you'd have four new council members instead of three, potentially. So, uh, i- i- it, there, it's just, it's a little different than than, than, than the other scenario, so, um.
Well, the proposal, putting District 5 in the sequence assumes that an incumbent is going to run. I think an incumbent who's, who's districted out or termed out is going to run and win.
Yes. Well, has, has the opportunity, but I, I understand, I understand the desire for it. I mean, I, you know, through this whole process, my, you know, I, I, I certainly support the, the concept of bringing more minority and, 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 uh, the whole basis behind California Voters' Right Act. However, for me, it's also very sad because I lose three fellow council members, two of you who I've served with for quite a period of time and have done a lot of excellent work. And, and really you will sit out at a minimum for two years. Uh, so it's, you know, for me, that's kind of bittersweet. You guys have worked hard, you've been elected, you know, you've elected in a general election, not just in a district, uh, which everybody keeps pointing out how much easier it will be in a district versus a citywide. And so for, for that, I'm, you know, I kind of understand because it's bittersweet for, for you guys who have run for election a couple of times, worked hard, uh, have excellent reputation and deserve that reputation to all of a sudden have a district sort of force you out, as you say, sort of that district recall. That's, that's unfair. However, I, I do think it makes it complicated. I, I, you know, it's, um, because you do have, you know, if, if you, if you have oh, it's corner because I keep forgetting what number it is, 5, 5. If 5 goes in, if 5 goes in, you have you know, if Zach prevails, then he goes into 4 and then we got to appoint somebody. If he doesn't, he stays in two seats. Somebody else prevails, maybe incumbent, may not be an incumbent. Um, it just gets, and then, I mean, Zach doesn't prevail and two years later, then he can't run because somebody's already in that district and that forces him out. It ends up, it's, it's very convoluted, I think, in that sense, and trying to be trying to be fair makes it very complicated. So, uh, a- all I can say is, you know, I'm saddened that, that this is the result of a process that we need to go through, but it's, the impact of it is, is that.
Anybody else have any comments?
Yes, I do. Um, I reside in District number 5 and my term is up in 2024. I have no plans to run again, so that kind of narrows down some of the options that are available. All the way through, uh, the discussion, I've kind of assumed we would do, uh, the district sequencing as, is in the map that was presented with the resident, uh, ordinance, uh, 1, 3, and 4 would be 2024 and 2 and 5 would be in 2026. Um, I really appreciate Councilmember Rin's thoughts on this because I know he's worked hard for the city and would like to continue doing that. But I agree, it gets a bit convoluted if we start to change around from what's proposed in the ordinance.
Well, I think Councilmember Rin is worried about the brain drain, which Councilmember Noak, uh, commented on as well. Um, so I think it's, it's, it's a laudable goal, but I and, and I'm, I'm falling on, on the Vincent side of, I'm not running for anything next year, at least in the city of Pleasant Hill.
Oh, boy. Oh, the rumors started.
Right, the rumors.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, um, I have a.
Wait, one more. Wait, can I get that? You can play it back later.
Yeah, let's say it's taped.
Well, that's right.
It's right. It's taped. Chad's taped.
Nevermind. Again, rookie, rookie comment.
So, and, and I just think it's too many elections. It's just too many elections. Um, I am worried, but you also have plays out. I'm, I'm cautiously optimistic that there will be three new council members sitting here at the dais with Councilmember chess and Noak. So actually, as I've said before, I would defer to the, with the opinion that either or both of you have as to how we should sequence the election, because you're going to bear the consequences of it.
Uh, well, certainly when I got elected, uh, wasn't thinking we'd be having this conversation, uh, needless to say. I, I started, I, as we were talking about this, I started to think about what would I say at the doorstep of somebody in two years? It, it's a little confusing. Like, what would I say? Oh, I'm here. Oh, wait, didn't you get elected for, for, no, I'm not. Well, why? Um, I, I, I think it goes away from, you know, I'm here, I'm coming back to you to earn your vote based on my performance that I did for those four years. Uh, and that's, that's, that's kind of where I where I start to kind of, you know, think about, um, how, you know, do, do you guys use the word convoluted? I, I maybe use the word confusing or, but, um, it's, i- i- you know, there's a, there's a pessimistic side of me that says that it is, it's a shame that we're going to lose people that we're going to lose. Um, the optimistic side to me says, well, if district elections is going to make it much easier supposedly from a financial point of view, then we better damn have a lot of candidates because they're not going to have to run a citywide campaign. They're only going to have to run for their district. So they better, I'm hoping that they're going to be pressure tested through a campaign, at least to get to that, to get to where they, you know, to get, to get elected. So that's.
So that's, that's the optimistic side of me. Now, is that any of that going to, you know, that's just, I'm just kind of saying the pluses and minuses there. But it, that's where, when I look at this and then I think about my role in this, because it seems to have kind of fallen on, on, kind of on, on my, my, I call it my district. I, I just kind of, I have a difficult time telling a constituent what, why I'm in front of their doorstep in two years versus, or any member of the community versus the normal four.
I, I do think there'll be plenty of confusion anyway, because there are a lot of people that are unaware of district elections. And when next year comes around and they're only voting for one candidate, no matter what, there will be a lot of explanations having to be said, no matter how much we have tried to communicate this over the last several months.
Totally.
That confusion will exist anyway, uh, next November, and we will have to do quite a bit of explaining when people only have the ability to vote for one person, so that's going to, you know, that's going to, it's going to have, it's going to be a little confusing anyway, let's put it that way.
And I, and I just want to clarify, you know, I, I don't mean to put council member chess in position, because I fullheartedly believe that he's the right man for the job and, you know, winning this last election was the right choice for him to be on council, so I by putting the, the suggestion of having district five up for election in no way takes away from my thoughts about council member chess and his abilities to serve. It's just some of the logistics that we're caught in trying to do this district mapping and unfortunately based on residency and where you live, that some of these things are going to come up. And so I just wanted to clear the record that I, I think you're a good council member chess and it's not anything personally directed to you, but it does put you in a tough position to decide what, what your, your plan is, so.
It's an early, that's an early report card.
The jury's still out on that, but I, I just wanted to clarify that. I don't want my comments to think in any way, shape, or form, or direction, or your skills as a council member, so. The scantron has not filled out yet. Thank you for your time.
So is, is, is there a consensus among all those comments about how to sequence?
I mean, I, I think.
Feel like their support and do an alternate at this point.
You know, I, again, I think all of us appreciate council member Rin's position and his concerns and his thoughts on this. I, I really do, and I, and I've said that time and time again, and, but I think this will be confusing enough process for the public anyway, that I would like to keep it simpler and therefore have the districts that have none of us residing in be the election, be the districts that are up for election in November twenty four. And that council member chess and I will have to decide what we're going to do come twenty twenty six about the districts that, that we happen to reside in. But again, I'm, I'm, council member chess said, I'm optimistic a lot of people run because it'll be easier financially to run and smaller area to cover. But, but I do want to comment, the job stays the same. The job is still a tough job and still requires a lot of hours and a lot of thought and input. And so it might be easier run, it's not going to be easier to, to do the job, so. I just want to make that point, but I think, I think we ought to stick with how the ordinance is laid out here for ease of process.
Since I brought it up, the contrary discussion topic, I will withdraw that and I would move forward with a motion to approve one, three, and four as proposed within the ordinance. With the amended item four verbiage about, I'm item four as amended.
I will second that and thank you, Matt, for, for doing that.
And that's for introduction of the ordinance. And then I need to ask, are we moving the numbering on three and four?
Can I address that? Yeah, please. At one of our public meetings, a member of the public suggested we renumber the districts.
Right.
And I made that suggestion and Mayor Flaherty followed up saying, why don't we do it clockwise? So I think one should stay as one. Three should become two. Five should become three. Two should become four, and then the center one, which is now four, would become five.
Okay, let's, let's make sure we get this right, because it's going to fix, it's going to, we're going to have to change the ordinance on the sequencing then.
I know, because that affects the sequencing.
Okay, one stays one.
Three to two.
Three becomes two.
Becomes two.
Five becomes three.
Three.
Two becomes four. And four becomes five.
Okay. We leave one is the only one unchanged. Number three has become two, number four has become five, number two has become four, number five has become three. That changes the sequencing then, and we are going to have in twenty twenty six three and four.
Three and four. Right.
Three and four, correct?
And one, two, and one, two, and five, and eleven, twenty.
Yes, one, two, and five.
One, two, and five, yeah.
And twenty twenty four.
Twenty twenty four. Is everybody good with that? Okay, then we need to look at the ordinance.
And if I need to amend my motion, I will to include the new numbers, if that works. You're, you're, you're more, you, you've been here longer, you deserve it.
Um, I'm fine with the renumbering in the clockwise manner as described.
I'm happy to go and make my motion during.
And, and the sequencing being the twenty twenty four elections are one, three, and five, excuse me, one, two, and five.
Yeah.
And the twenty twenty six elections are district three and four.
That would be three and four. Okay, that changes section B of the ordinance. So that it reads in twenty twenty four and every four years thereafter, the following three city council districts shall be elected by district. District one, district two, and district five. In twenty twenty six and every four years thereafter, the following two city council districts shall be elected by district. District three and district four. And it changes the sequencing on the proposed map five.
Correct.
Up in the upper right hand corner. Okay?
Correct, yeah.
And we have a motion and a second, right?
There's a motion by Vice Mayor Rin, a second by Councilmember Noah.
As amended.
As amended. And we have the roll call.
Noah?
Yes.
Rin?
Yes.
Chess?
Yes.
Vincent?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes. All right, the orders will be brought back at our next scheduled meeting of July seventeen. And with that, there's no further business, we'll adjourn to our July seventeen twenty twenty three meeting.
Thank you.
You all for your efforts tonight. Thank you for those who followed along in person or online.